This month.
Okay, so my question is, since we don't have a.
Okay, well, we'll let you on in a second.
Okay, there you go.
Perfect, thank you. He's jumping on via Zoom. He forgot.
Mr. Baffa will be on via Zoom, so we'll have five.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and just get her started then.
I'll let you know when he, when he jumps on, then we can go.
Okay.
What will he have done a year ago without Zoom?
Oh, I know.
It looks like he's gonna be connecting soon. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City of Salina Planning Commission meeting for June first, two thousand twenty-one. Call that to order.
And I'll call the role. Commissioner Gilmore. Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt.
Here.
Commissioner Baffa.
He's muted.
And Commissioner Waters absent. So we have a quorum of five as soon as we get Mr. Baffa unmuted. And Margie, can you confirm that the packet has been posted and notice provided?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was met.
Okay, so that gives us jurisdiction to open the meeting and consider item two point one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Okay, on to, we good for new business?
We are good to move on to new business.
Okay. Three point one, application CU two one dash two filed by Caitlin Barnes requesting approval of conditional use permit to allow group daycare home to be established and operate in an R two multiple family residential district. The subject property is legally described as the south forty-five feet of lots eighteen and twenty on University Place of the University in addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and is addressed at one thirty-three South Phillips Avenue. Is rescheduled from April sixth of two thousand twenty-one to allow for Salina Board of Zoning Appeals to consider minimum lot width and lot size variances for this property prior to the planning commission consideration of conditional use permit.
So Mr. Hirsch will provide the report on this application.
Yes, thank you. So picking up where we left off last time and doing a quick review, Ms. Barnes is applying for a conditional use permit for a group daycare home, which would allow her to have up to twelve children at this location at her personal residence of one thirty-three South Phillips. That group daycare would also involve a additional care provider that would come on site to assist her with providing care for the children that come to her daycare. She had been operating a group daycare at eleven oh seven West State Street, at which time her previous landlord did not renew her lease, and so she was looking for a new location to provide daycare for her existing children and their families, and this is the location she came up with. And when we came before the board at our April sixth meeting, the planning commission was unable to take action in the affirmative of approving and review, reviewing and approving the group daycare home because the site did not qualify, didn't need, did not meet all of the lot dimensional requirements, and so the planning commission referred Ms. Barnes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so then, at the May twentieth Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a number of variances. The variances that were approved were a minimum lot width variance, a minimum lot size variance, a maximum lot coverage variance, a front yard setback variance, as well as relief from the strict application of the All Street Parking Regulations. And so these variances bring the property into zoning conformance, which is the first criteria of a conditional use permit, looking at the compliance with the zoning ordinance and the requirements thereof. And so when we look at welfare and convenience of the public, staff believes that permitting the group daycare home in the proposed location could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by providing daycare services for infants and toddlers of families residing in the Cottonwood Elementary School neighborhood, which is very near, it's half a block away. And so this is a, an area where there are our children presently, and, and there are families in the area as well as the community at large that need daycare that this could help provide daycare for. In looking at injury to the surrounding property, the applicant states and staff would agree that there are no perceivable changes to the property. The only alteration that is being proposed is a four-foot chain link fence around the front of the property, which is outlined here in red. There is an existing four-foot chain link fence along the alley on the south, and that will be expanded to create a play area for children on the northwest and south sides of the property. Other than that, there will be no physical changes to the property and no changes in appearance either. The only concern that has come up with the potential changes would be the play area, and that's a matter of discretion on, on your part. The typical daycare will have a play area at the, at the rear of the property. In this case, there is a larger detached garage at the east end of the property, which would be considered the rear, and that prohibits having daycare play areas back there. And so what the applicant is proposing is, is daycare play areas on the north side, south side, and in the front yard along the west. And so the concerns with that are you have divided play areas, which could reduce site lines for daycare providers. The applicant states that there are two daycare providers, so that's something to keep in mind, and it does help with monitoring children. And the other concern is there have been neighbors that have commented on having different toys and vehicles and other items in the front yard area that are atypical for daycares when you have rear yard play area. So it does bring the play area to the front, which could have a different visible impact than what you normally might find with a group daycare. And looking at domination of the neighborhood, the neighborhood consists of single-family dwellings, all built in the early nineteen hundreds, similar to what the applicant's house was built in, and so we're not looking at anything that's really different from the neighborhood there. The applicant is the only resident of the house, and she has one vehicle, and she does have a two-car garage, which the Board of Zoning Appeals approved to be used by both her and her, her care assistant, which opens up the driveway off of the alley for loading and loading of children. So children could be dropped off adjacent to the alley and can enter and exit into the group daycare home through a back porch that's on the east side of the building. And that also kind of addresses the All Street Parking and Access. So because the Board of Zoning Appeals allowed for relief of the strict application of the All Street Parking requirements based on the applicant's unique situation, we don't believe that All Street Parking will be an issue. There may be instances where you have multiple parents coming either to drop off kids or pick up kids, and which case there may be some activity in Phillips, but that's not, that's not that abnormal, and it's a brief temporal situation where it takes care of itself rather quickly. So with that, the applicant has been operating a group daycare home in good standing with the Health Department from her eleven oh seven West State Street property for about a year, and the Health Department, Fire Department, Building Services of all inspected the dwelling and found it to be in conformance with all the life safety requirements. And so even though that the Board of Zoning Appeals has approved multiple variances that would allow the planning to consider the group daycare home, it's still your responsibility to weigh and determine whether or not the site and the property are suitable for the proposed group daycare home. So the alternative actions we have is you could approve the conditional use permit application with or without conditions if the commission believes the subject property is a suitable location for the proposed use and will not cause injury to the surrounding properties if approved of this location. You could also approve the conditional use permit, subject to any conditions that, that might be appropriate. You could postpone consideration of the application if the commission requires additional information, or you could deny the applicant's request if you do not feel that the correct findings could be, or adequate findings can be made to justify this being a suitable location for group daycare home. If the commission does agree to, or does decide to approve the group daycare home, conditional use permit as requested, staff does have a number of findings on page ten, as well as a condition of approval, and that condition is that no more than twelve children may be cared for at any one time in accordance with state standards for group daycare homes, and that's a standard condition that we try to use on all of our group daycare home applications or conditional uses. So with that, staff will take any questions that you might have.
Can you talk about the subject of transferability, Dustin?
Yeah, so another condition that, that could be added, and it's an option two, is, is typically a conditional use permit is approved for the property and runs with the land. However, you could make it non-transferable, meaning that should the applicant cease to operate her group daycare home, or if she were to move and somebody else were to acquire the property or move in as a tenant, that they would not, that, that conditional use permit for the group daycare home would not transfer to them. It would essentially cease and desist the, the conditional use permit for the group daycare home would. So it would be, in other words, the conditional use permit would be for this applicant in her current situation only, and if things changed, it would cease.
Two things I have. One is the gate into the location. Is it gonna have some kind of lock on it so that the kids can't open the door, open the gate?
I think we'll let the applicant speak to that when, when it's their turn to address the commission.
Okay.
Staff doesn't know the answer to that, though.
All right. Second thing, is there a way to store the toys so it's not an annoyance for the neighborhood?
That would be something for the applicant to speak on as well. I mean, there are areas on the north and south side that aren't in the front yard that maybe, maybe something could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. The applicant here. Would you like to come up, please? Thank you.
Caitlin Barnes, one thirty-three South Phillips Avenue. As for the gate, we can, I mean, it will be able to have a lock on it, yes, but the lock will not be able to be on it unless we are actually outside, because the post office will need to be able to get in the fence as well as kids getting on and off the bus, because we do have a couple that do transport. But I don't know that a lock would be necessary, the, the way that we observe the kids and stuff when we're outside, we're not just sitting down, we're down, you know, with them, playing with them, especially with the way that the fence was set up. We plan to have myself on one end, on one corner, like on the north corner by the road, and then a, my additional staff member on the south corner by the road, so we would be able to intervene before a kid would be able to get out of the fence. And then the garage will be able to store, we don't have a ton of outside toys, the garage will be able to store all of our ride-on toys, even with both cars in the garage. The only thing that would not be able to be moved is we have a, like, three and a half, four-foot little, like, jungle gym that just has the, where they climb up and go down the slide. That's the only thing that would stay in the yard.
Ms. Barnes, where's the gate gonna be located at? Is that gonna be right in the center of the front?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and then we will also have a gate on the south, the south side at the end, right there. Yeah, there will be a gate there in case if the kids get muddy footprints and stuff, we'll go through the back instead of through the front to go in, because their cubbies are gonna be in that back room right there, just so that they don't have to track mud through the house and whatnot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And at full capacity, how many children do you expect to have?
I usually maintain, I, right, right now, I have seventeen children enrolled, not all seventeen of them come at the same time, obviously. We're working within the ratios that I can have now without the conditional use permit, but it is going to directly affect families starting tomorrow, because I have a family whose older kids will not be able to come unless the conditional use permit is approved, because school is out. So I try to maintain ten to twelve, ten to twelve kids at a time. If you don't approve the conditional use permit, I can have ten children, but that also puts three staff members out of a job, and it will also, it will require me to lose some of the children that I already have enrolled, which means parents will not have adequate care for their children. So.
You can probably speak for this more than I could, but am I correct in understanding that there is definitely a shortage?
Yes.
In childcare?
Yes.
Okay.
According to Childcare Aware, in two thousand nineteen, only ten percent of licensed spaces for infants and twenty-two percent of licensed spaces for toddlers were available in the state of Kansas. It's even in more of a demand now that, you know, we've been going through the pandemic, there have been daycares that have had to shut down. Salina is in a huge demand for childcare, like, we can't afford to lose even the two additional spots that I've already have filled.
Understood. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Just one note, the fence, is it, is that what state requires, is four feet on that?
The state, actually, KDHG does not require a fence.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, we, I chose to put the fence up just because it gives the children a better physical boundary of knowing, you know, where they can and cannot go. We've actually had kids outside without the fence, we've had no issues
Okay.
with anybody trying to run into the street or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
And why does it have to be a four-foot, too? Why couldn't it be a three-foot, which would? Why couldn't it be a three-foot, which would be more in line with the neighborhood?
There was already a four-foot chain link fence on the south side of the house, and we just added on to that to continue.
I hope not for their objections.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this issue? Or this item? Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah, hang on. I think that there's not an issue with this. I would say, make a motion to approve application CU 21-2 with, they can, the conditional use is only for this daycare provider, that it won't transfer if this daycare provider is not there and somebody else comes into it.
I second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, I would note that nobody on Zoom raised their hand or paid for my attention when we were doing comments for the public, just so that we have that on record.
Easy to forget about that facet of.
Yeah, I mean, you did ask for public comment, but we didn't have anything on Zoom, so I wanted to note.
Thank you. I'll wait longer next time, I apologize.
No, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next item. 3.2, application CU 21-3 filed by Jody Papadah, requesting approval of conditional use permit to allow group daycare home to be established and operate in an R1, single-family residential district. The subject property is legally described as Lot 7, Block 13 of the Highland Court Edition in the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. And the address is 729 West Republic Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be doing this presentation as well. The subject property is on West Republic, and it's highlighted in blue on our aerial photo here. And just as a point of context, you'll see just to the west a little bit is Sunset Park, where Republic goes on the north side of Sunset Park. So that's kind of the area that we're looking at. And here is kind of a zoomed-in version of that, so that we can see what we're dealing with. And I do have an aerial site plan that shows the dimensions of the existing structures in relation to the property lines. So the applicant, Jody Papadah, she has currently been operating a group daycare home from her current residence at 2805 Patty Drive, and she's been doing that for the last five years. And has maintained good standing with no complaints with KDHE and as well as planning staff during that time. She's looking to relocate her group daycare home to 729 West Republic here. And as with the last item, because we are going from a licensed daycare with 10 children and no assistant to a group daycare home, which allows for 12 children and one assistant, it does require a conditional use permit that is reviewed and approved by the planning commission. In looking at the compliance with the zoning ordinance, the property was originally platted in 1918 as part of the Highland Court Edition, and is 50 feet wide by 134 feet deep, and results in 6,700 square feet of total area. Now typically, the R1 district requires a lot, minimum lot width of 60 feet. However, the non-conforming section of the zoning ordinance recognizes that there are older lots in town and older properties, that if you have a platted lot of record that's kept wholly intact and hasn't been split, that it is developable and therefore conforming, and there's different measurements and different requirements based on that. And so what that means is that this property meets all of the requirements in terms of the zoning ordinance. And so if we look at the aerial photo, we can kind of dig into them a little bit more. You've got a 30-foot setback along Republic. You have a five-foot setback on the east side, which the non-conforming section allows for a different standard of side yard setback than what the zoning, the underlying zoning district does. Because it is a pre-existing or established plat, platted lot of record, you can have as little as 10% of your lot width dedicated to a side yard setback, no less than five feet, which is what we have here, we have five feet. So that side yard setback, even though it's less than seven and a half feet, is conforming because of the non-conforming regulation section for platted lots of record. On the west side, we have a 13-foot setback, 12 of which is paved area for the driveway. You have a 20-by-20 detached garage in the rear and another 10-by-10 detached storage building. And the garage is set back 28 and a half feet from the rear property line. So even though the property is rather narrow at only 50 feet, it is fairly deep with 134 feet in depth. Looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, the Health Department, Building Services, and Fire Department have all inspected the property, and everything seems to be in compliance with all life safety requirements. And staff believes that the proposed group daycare home could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public at this location for families within the Salina community, as well as families that are in the Husner Elementary School neighborhood. And looking at injury to the surrounding property, the applicant isn't proposing any changes to the property. There is an existing wood, solid six-foot fence on the south side of the property. The fence goes from the southwest corner of the dwelling, which is where I'm, kind of got my cursor here, and connects to the northeast corner of the garage. And then it also goes along the property boundaries on the west, south, and east sides of the property. So all of the, what we consider the backyard area, is fenced in with a solid six-foot fence. Staff would note that we have received a letter that is in your packet, and it expresses concerns about the environmental condition of the subject property, the speed at which traffic travels down Republic Avenue, and the traffic impact a group daycare home may have or add to the neighborhood. Looking at the domination of the neighborhood, the, again, there aren't any proposed changes to the structure or landscaping or building of the site. And so from a passerby, it would look the same as it currently does, or as it has for some time now. The surrounding properties all consist of single-family homes built in the 1930s and 40s, so they all have a, kind of a similar feel and continuity to them. So that will not change with the proposed group daycare. The one thing that comes up that could impact the neighborhood and deals also with off-street parking is the off-street parking. Now, there aren't, there is not any on-street parking along the stretch of Republic. However, the applicant does have a two-car garage, as well as an 80-foot driveway that's 12 feet long. And so one of the things that the applicant and the parents will have to be mindful of is making sure that, you know, they pull, when they drop kids off, to really pull in, so that if parents come behind, then they have places to pull in, and then they'll have to be patient to back out if there's other people there. But there is enough room for up to six off-street parking spaces on the property, which is more than what we typically see for a group daycare home. So, yeah, it's staff analysis. The applicant has been operating a group daycare home in good standing with the Health Department from her previous residence at 2805 Patty Drive for the last five years. The Fire Department, along with Building Services and the Health Department, have all inspected the property and found it to be in compliance with all the adequate or required regulations. And there's also sufficient off-street parking for a group daycare home. So alternatives that we have is we have one, you could approve the conditional use permit application as submitted upon finding that the requirements of Section 425972(c)(2) of the Salina Code have been satisfied. You can approve the conditional use permit application with specific conditions or revisions to the plan. You could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed, or you can deny the application if you don't feel that the site is suitable for a group daycare home. Staff does have a number of findings on page six that would support approving the proposed conditional use permit if the planning commission agrees with that sentiment. And we do have the same condition of approval that we had for the last application, which is that no more than 12 children may be carried, cared for at any one time in accordance with state standards for group daycare homes. If that, staff will take any questions that you might have.
That area on Republic is able to have parking, you did say?
I don't believe this area does have on-street parking.
Okay.
According to the letter from the neighboring property owner, there's no parking allowed on the south side of West Republic, and this property is located on the south side. But dropping off and parking are not the same thing. So you wouldn't be able to park a car permanently along the south side of the street, according to this letter, but that doesn't prevent people from being able to pull to the curb and drop someone off.
Okay.
What about off-street, what about parking on Funston Avenue, just to the west?
Yeah, Funston, I believe, is open for parking. You could have on-street parking on Funston.
So they could park on Funston and then just?
Walk around the corner.
Walk around the corner and drop off also, correct?
Yes, correct.
Has this property been inspected since the last occupants were?
Yes, it's been, it was inspected, oh, I don't know the exact date, but maybe two weeks ago? Does that sound about right, Lee, and I don't know? Yeah, two, three weeks ago.
You want to speak to the difference between what's shown in the aerial photo and what it looks like today, Dustin?
Yeah, so I'll, this photo is actually a 2014 aerial, but it's more representative of what's there today. If I were to go to the 2020 aerial photo, it would look dramatically different. There's a lot more vehicles, and I don't know if their structures are what they are in the backyard that aren't there today. And I have some photographs as well, if that's of interest. They're not all great pictures.
So the only thing that's left there now is just that two-car garage?
We have a two-car garage, and there's a shed kind of to the side here.
Oh, okay.
Let me see if I can get a better picture, give me a moment. This shows kind of, there's a patio here, two-car garage here, storage building here. Here's looking from the patio. So just to the right side of our screen is where the gate is. That connects the driveway to the backyard, and we're on a patio looking back. And so you have a detached garage here, and then behind the detached garage, there's a 10-by-10 storage shed that, this one. So you kind of get a feel for what that backyard looks like. So it's drastically different than what it was in just 2020, but there's only two structures in the backyard now.
Could we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, I was going to get there. Does anybody else have any questions for staff?
No. That last photo was from when?
The aerial photo?
Yeah. The one that you showed where it was kind of cleaned out?
2014, 2014, you didn't see the same clutter that you did in the 2020.
Gotcha.
And the 2014, which is the one that you see up here now, is more representative of what's there today.
Okay.
Okay. So no more questions for staff?
No.
Is the applicant present?
I am.
Would you please come up? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I guess I just want to be able to continue to offer.
This is a formality.
Oh, sorry.
You just need your full name and your address.
Jody Papadah.
Yeah, just for the record, please.
Jody Papadah, 729 West Republic Avenue, here in Salina.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I just want to be able to maintain my group license, and this is a formality that I have to go through this conditional use permit again to be able to transfer to a new location. I'm blessed to be able to still run my daycare. A lot of providers had to close, as you heard Ms. Barnes state, because of COVID. And I do provide services for a lot of essential workers, so I just want to be able to maintain that.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
So you've got to do a conditional permit right now?
Correct.
And you're trying, you want to transfer, how long have you had that permit?
Five years.
Five years?
Correct.
So the backyard, realize that at one point, there was a lot of clutter there. It's been cleaned back out, but the one photo we did see, it was pretty much patio then dirt. So is there actually grass back there?
Well, my tenants that I had there did a number on the property. They're the ones that had those additional structures. And yes, when I removed them, all of their clutter was removed as well. And unfortunately, it was dirt when I got in there about a month ago, and we have planted grass, and we have little sprouts. So we slowly have grass growing, but it's a process, as you know.
Okay. And then we had a question earlier about inspection. So who did an inspection of the property?
Recently, within the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
We had the Fire Department there, there was a couple of city officials, the Health Department was there. There were like five or six people that showed up at the same time to do the inspection.
Okay. And the reason for that comment kind of comes back and probably with Mr. Papadah, but it sounds like the prior tenants that were there?
Correct.
That there may have been some issues. So what is the process to ensure that there isn't anything remaining from them in that area?
I've had it all removed. I paid for it to be removed prior to me taking over and moving some of my daycare stuff there. I'm still in the process of moving. I'm not there 100% yet, because I will be residing there as well. But yes, I will personally be residing in that residence.
Okay.
So I can assure you, it will not look like it did when they lived there.
Okay.
And the off-street parking, I just want to say, you're correct. On the south side of Republic, it says no parking, there are no parking signs there. On the other side of the street, it's my understanding that vehicles can park there, because there's a couple neighbors that have a van down the street on that, on the north side. My very first day, having some people over there, they parked on that south side. I made it abundantly clear at that time, please don't park on that side, park on the north side if you need to, or on Funston, or please pull up into the driveway as there's ample space. But yeah, I did have to address it with a couple of people, because they just pulled right up there, and I'm like, there's a sign, please don't do that.
Okay.
Any more questions for the applicant? Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this item?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I'm Peter Clark. I did submit a letter of some considerations. It sounds like most of them are getting handled. I live at 1,000 Funston. And I did submit another letter. I don't know if that one got forwarded to any of you about last, late last week. What that letter had basically summarized was some observations. It looked like the daycare had begun operations last Monday. And I just kind of recorded, you know, what I witnessed as far as traffic from my window, and then, you know, put that in a summary letter to Mr. Dean Andrew. And apparently, it wasn't in operation on Friday. And then today, it was in operation again, but I didn't make written observations. So just kind of to speak to what I saw, and then you'll have a little more information to make your decisions in granting or not granting or amending the conditional use permit. So I saw an average of dropped off and picked up children every day was 10. The owner and what I appeared to think was the owner's vehicle, or an assistance vehicle, or another assistance, seemed like there was two assistants, but there was 23 of those. Drop-off and arrivals was 23 or 22. These are for the clients, I think. And 26 times they picked up, so some kind of discrepancy. Anyway, it added up to about 24 vehicles per day for the 10 children. And then if we would go to 12 children, we would probably get 28 vehicles at that address. Now, as far as parking off-street, the arrangement was there's a giant, well, not giant, but an extended white van parked in the driveway in front of the garage. And then sometimes one of the assistance vehicles would be in front of that vehicle closer to the street. And then there's a little extra parking pad, it looks like, where most of the time, the other vehicle, probably the owner's vehicle, would be parked, which is nice, so they're not all in one line. Yeah, right there, that extra part. And in reading the package, it is good to have, you know, a way for that vehicle to get out should there be somebody pulled in behind, you know, in the driveway. But unfortunately, what I did see on Republic Street on the south side over those three days, there was, it's just an average of one per day that parked, left the vehicle, went in, came out with the kid, or dropped off at whichever way. Just three times where the, right where that white car is, basically, where there's no parking. Of course, that really impedes traffic because that is a flowing lane of traffic there on the south, or the, I guess it'd be the eastbound lane of Republic. I had spoken with the city engineer long ago. They had painted those yellow lines in an improper location and don't want to change it. About where that white truck is, but back a couple houses, there's van that just stays there, and it always makes the other vehicles coming. I'm surprised it's not in the picture. But they do have to veer off on, to this side, the south side of those yellow dashed lines. And so there's constantly danger there from vehicles getting out of the lane. It is just partly because of where the lines were painted. Otherwise, that street would flow probably okay. Now, as far as like blocking the sidewalk, I can't say whether that is a parking infraction, but out of 48 drop-offs and arrivals, 35 of those stopped right on top of the sidewalk. And so they're not able to access that full length of the driveway that is listed in the application as it's written. And so they can't, you know, the back of their vehicle couldn't get beyond, either they couldn't get into the driveway, or they chose not to. And that's just, that's the general observation I have. I'm very, very happy that the house has been picked up. It was really becoming a blight, and that was part of my concern, was the environment of what we knew of the neighbors that previously occupied the premises. So I guess I can confirm that I did witness all the cleanup. There was dumpster after dumpster getting hauled away, and so that is, that's amazing. So basically, in closing, I think maybe this could be approved use if we were to address the off-street parking somehow to make sure that it does occur off-street into the driveway, you know, whether the vans can get into the garage, but that is, that's my input. Do you have any questions?
Can you bring that picture back up? So, and I see the, kind of the pad that you're talking off to the side, that it sounds like the applicant's vehicle is parked too, so that they can get out of the driveway. Where were you talking that the extended-length van was parked at?
So it would park some distance in front of the garage, a little further out than the red car, maybe, it could be right there, but it basically stops before you get to the back of the house. It's quite a, you know, maybe, let's say it's a 15-passenger, 16-passenger van.
Okay.
Not, that looks like a really small car there. But, so maybe where the pointer is on the screen now, and then the second little white SUV that's there every day parks behind that van, and then theoretically, there's room behind that one for the first drop-off, you know, if they don't come all at once. And then the, you know, I'm assuming the owner's SUV is on that little pad right there, yeah. So when they don't come all at once and they don't block a sidewalk, it won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
You know, I think the comment that was made about trying to do something with off-street parking, you know, that in front there, I don't care, you could put 100 signs up there, and I don't care what you do, somebody's going to pull up there and drop their child off at there, whether you have a sign that says no parking or not. I mean, that's just, that's just the nature of, it just seems like that's what happens. You know, you did say that the off-street parking could be on Funston over there, and they could use it, walk around the corner.
There's kind of a, there's actually a difference, and I'm kind of going to reference back to my law enforcement years. Hopefully, I'm recalling this right, but there's actually a difference between parking and leaving the vehicle and the technical term they use in the standard traffic offense, I believe is standing. And I think when somebody drops a child off, they're, standing is the term, and I don't think technically it's illegal.
It's illegal.
So if that's what's going on, it's definitely a gray area. And kind of back to the traffic part of it, the question mark for me would be that van that hasn't moved or is in the same place? Is that maybe a conversation we need to have with the local department about, because I know on public streets, if something's parked for over 24 hours, I believe it's subject to tow, and they can throw a sticker on it? And if that's just sitting there and it's an impediment to traffic flow and it's a fixture in the neighborhood, it might be a phone call worth making? Just my, I'm sorry?
Could I comment on that?
Please, if you would come up.
Yes, I've lived at that address since 2010, and I don't remember when those vans weren't there, if they ever weren't there, but there was two vans originally. And whoever owns the house south of where that's parked must have a system, because the orange stickers stop getting on the van, so maybe they move it overnight and-
Sometimes it takes a phone call.
Yeah, but it's basically there all the time.
Yeah, because I, I mean, and again, I'm speaking, just I'm former law enforcement, I used to work patrol, other city, but I think it translates fairly well. That's the kind of thing where an officer's going to drive through that neighborhood, and maybe he's got an eight or 10-hour shift, and he might take note of that vehicle and be very familiar with it, but does he know it's been there and not moved for the last 24 hours? He probably doesn't. And I, you know, sometimes they figure it out, but I would, if it's a problem, I would encourage a phone call. I mean, not that I want to be that guy, but it sounds like it's legitimately a problem.
And I have some relationship with the neighbors, and I'll have a new neighbor, and I think that maybe we could decide whether that's causing undue hazard. You know, it does make the cars come into the other lane, but since they won't move those yellow stripes to get them where they need to be, then, you know, this isn't anything to do with this applicant.
Yeah, I mean, daycare or not, that van's-
But if there's going to be more kids getting out-
For a long time.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's a public street. It's not their parking lot. It's not their driveway. So there are stipulations to legally parking in the street, and one of them is you do need to move the vehicle occasionally. And again, I'm not speaking to you about that, obviously, in the sense of you're the offender. It's just, as a general thing, I think it's a courtesy as well, that if you live in a neighborhood, maybe things need to circulate.
Yeah. Greg, can they give me a, what's the difference between white lines and the yellow lines?
The direction of traffic.
The yellow lines are just used to divide the lanes, and so they're, if they're broken, broken lines, but they have gone to yellow paint because it's more visible than the white.
Okay, that was the question there, okay.
I do have a question for the applicant again, just from our public's comment going back then. So the white van that you have on your property? So do you do pickup and drop-offs then also?
I do.
Okay. So how often are you doing those types, or how many kids do you pick up or drop off?
Four, from four different schools.
Okay.
Now that school is out, obviously, I won't be doing that over the summer, thank goodness. And I had considered moving the van over onto Funston's kind of around, because I'm good friends with my neighbor Marilyn next door on the corner, and so that's her property. But again, that was my concern, leaving it parked for too long, getting a ticket because it hasn't been moved. So I've just left it in my driveway. I probably have four feet where I can move it back closer to the garage, so I suppose that that could be an option, that I would go ahead and move it back to, closer to the garage door, so that it would give additional feet up front for them to pull in.
Right. And you have been operating with up to 10 children there currently over the last week, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I got my temporary license, and I was told that I could, as soon as I got that, that I was okay to go.
Right. So you still have parents that are learning the new location-
Correct.
And where the drop-off and everything else is.
Correct. And that's why I had that conversation with them.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that'd like to comment on this item?
We do not appear to have anyone on Zoom wanting to comment.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve application CU21-3.
I will second that.
With that motion, is the, are we keeping it as overall, or is it going to be strictly for this applicant for the?
It'd be strictly for this applicant.
That's a good idea. I like that better.
Transferable, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application subject to two conditions, ones that no more than 12 children be cared for at any one time, and the other condition that this would not be transferable to another daycare provider.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have one more conditional use permit application for you.
3.3.
Yes.
All right. Application CU21-4 filed by Kansas Wesleyan University requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of three multifamily dwelling units, student housing units in parentheses, on a single zoning lot in an R2 multifamily residential district. The subject property is legally described as the east 100 feet of Lot 75 on Highland Avenue in the grounds of Kansas Wesleyan University, in addition to the City of Salina, Celine County, Kansas, and is addressed as 1600 South Highland Avenue.
I will be presenting this report as well. The subject property is the southwest corner of Claflin and Highland. In the aerial photo, you'll see what it was, a two-story duplex that was originally constructed in 1940 on a piece of property that was platted as part of the grounds of Kansas Wesleyan in 1886, and is 40 feet by 100 feet. So it's 40 feet north-south by 100 feet east-west. In 2020, Kansas Wesleyan demolished that structure, and the lot is currently vacant, and the applicant is looking to construct three independent, separate dwelling units that are shown on this site plan, and we'll go to that site plan and just kind of look at it here. When Kansas Wesleyan was talking to staff about this particular project, we identified that there were a number of variances that would be required before the planning commission could consider the conditional use permit. And so on May 20th, the, this particular project went before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a number of variances. Those variances consist of a minimum lot width variance and a minimum lot area variance, a front yard setback variance, actually, two front yard setback variances. So a front yard setback variance for Claflin, as well as a front yard setback variance on Highland. Both those front yard setbacks allow the three different independent, separate dwelling units to be constructed with less than 25 foot in terms of their setback, which if you had 25 feet and 25 feet, it wouldn't leave you much building room left to work with there. So those four different variances were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the effect of that decision is it turns all of these non-conforming characteristics to conforming characteristics and makes the property eligible for review by the planning commission, so they can consider the proposed conditional use permit for multifamily dwellings on a R2 zone property. So looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, there, the units could contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public by adding student housing to the Kansas Wesleyan campus. This would help alleviate some of the housing demand for Kansas Wesleyan's growing student population by providing a unique housing product. It would also put a vacant, underutilized property into productive use. As you all are aware, Salina is in what some might call a housing crisis, where finding housing is difficult, and that rings true for Kansas Wesleyan students as it does the general population. And previously, there was a duplex here that could house up to eight individuals, and what we have now is three separate units that each can house up to five tenants. Each of the units are five bedrooms, and so combined, the three units could have up to 15 tenants or 15 students for housing. In looking at the impacts and injury to the surrounding property and the domination of the neighborhood, Kansas Wesleyan owns all of the surrounding properties. There aren't any surrounding properties that are in at least immediate vicinity that are owned by anybody else, and so whatever impacts there might be would be localized on their own selves. And staff would note that this is phase one of a larger plan. And so if we were to look at the aerial photo, Kansas Wesleyan owns a vast majority of the property, doesn't own all of the properties between Highland and Ninth Street, but they own a lot of them, and one of their visions is to have a student housing village with this type of housing product on the west side of Highland and incorporate this area into their campus. Currently, their campus essentially ends here, but they do have quite a bit of holdings on the west side of Highland, as well as their operations center, which is this long building that you see in the aerial photo that you drive by on Ninth Street. One thing that the applicant points out and staff agrees with is that the three units that are being proposed have roughly the same footprint as the previous building that was there, and is similar in terms of total square footage as the surrounding properties. So when you look at the total square footage, the previous unit had 1,654 square feet of lot coverage, and these three units combined are actually less, with 1,584 square feet of lot coverage. In looking at parking, the applicant is not proposing any off-street parking on the property where the units are being proposed. However, when we look at Kansas Wesleyan, staff has always taken a campus approach because it is a university campus, and what that means is you don't necessarily have all of your- However, when we look at Kansas Wesleyan, staff has always taken a campus approach because it is a university campus. And what that means is you don't necessarily have all of your parking adjacent or on the particular properties that may typically be required to have them. And so you have pockets of parking lots around the campus that provide off-street parking. And the idea is that the sum total of the parking meets or exceeds the required amount of off-street parking. And staff tries to, to keep a running total of off-street parking that's being provided as well as what's being required, required for Kansas Wesleyan projects so that we can kind of understand what's going on. And currently, we have 84 additional surplus parking spaces. Now, they are not all in direct vicinity of this particular project, but there are off-street parking spaces available for students. And Kansas Wesleyan is in the planning phases of an off-street parking project on the north side of Claflin across the street. And so the, the vision is that for the proposed student housing village, this cottage-style village that's going to be on the south side of Claflin, there would be parking on the north side of Claflin for those, those units. And that, the proposed product that we're dealing with, the three units, would be phase one of that greater project. One of the advantages of doing infill development, which this will be a type of infill development, is that you have all necessary public utilities and services in place. And that's certainly true with this, where we do have a six-inch water line to the east of the property in Highland. And we also have a tenant sanitary sewer line in Claflin and appropriate drainage for stormwater runoff. Looking at traffic and access, we've already talked about the off-street parking. And that's, that's really the biggest issue with this. And there are surplus parking spaces on campus that students could use, as well as the potential proposed parking on the north side of Claflin. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan shows this area as urban residential. And that particular classification allows for single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, as well as multifamily residential housing, which is what we're looking at here. So it would be appropriate for the type of development that's being proposed. It does have a secondary, what we, what the plan identifies as uses. And that would be higher development, higher density housing, which is eight to 20 dwelling units per acre. What's being proposed with the first phase is 32 units per acre. But a lot of that's due to the nominal size of the lot only being 40 feet by 100 feet. And as the future phases of the student housing village are expanded, that density level should change. Location criteria for this type of activity views, views this as taking place in transition areas that are adjacent to mixed-use centers or in stu, or adjacent to institutional uses, which Kansas Wesleyan would certainly be considered an institutional-type use. So we do have some findings of fact at the bottom of page seven and the top of page eight for the planning commission to consider. There are also a number of action items that you could take, the first being you could approve the conditional use permit application as submitted upon finding that the requirements have been met. You could approve the conditional use permit application subject to conditions and/or revisions to the plan for constructing the new housing units on the site. Number three, you could postpone consideration of this application if additional information is needed. Or you could deny the application if you feel that it would cause injury to the surrounding property or it's, this type of development isn't suitable on, on this site. Staff does have a number of recommendations if you wish to approve the proposed conditional use permit. And the first is that construction of the housing units shall comply with all applicable international residential code, international building code and fire code requirements. And number two is that a front yard landscape planting plan showing the location and types of varieties of planting shall be submitted with the building permit application for Claflin Avenue and Highland Avenue, front yard areas. We do have a, kind of an elevation drawing mock-up that does show how they, they perceive or how they view having shrubs in the front yard area as well as trees. Now, this would not count as, we would not classify this as a landscape planting plan. A landscape planting plan would be more of a site plan drawing as you're looking down at the site and would show specific varieties as well as their, their locations. But this is just to give you a general idea of what's, what's being thought of. And we would request that we have a, a formal landscape planting plan as part of this project. And then number three is that construction of the three student housing units and development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans presented to and approved by the planning commission. So what those plans will consist of is this elevation drawing. So this would show you what the end product would look like. And then there's also plans here that have a, have floor plans that show how, how the structure would be laid out with, with two levels, with the first level having a common living area and kitchen and two bedrooms and a shared bath. And the second would have another common living area and three bedrooms and a shared bath. And then there's some just interior, what we call interior elevations, showing you what the inside would look like. Another exterior elevation that matches the other exterior elevation that you saw. And then the site plan that shows where the proposed units would be in relationship to each other and the lot lines of the property. So with that, staff would take any questions that you might have, or we could revisit any of these graphics that we've kind of gone through.
It's safe to assume that the landscape maintenance is going to be the university's responsibility, correct?
Yeah, this particular property will be owned and maintained as part of the university campus.
Okay.
And so it would be rolled into their maintenance crew's responsibility. That's, that's, that's understanding the way the applicant can confirm that.
Can you go back?
And the, the landscape plan will come back to us?
The landscape plan would not come back to you unless you specifically requested that. Generally, in these types of situations, what would happen is if the planning commission's comfortable with the general feel of what's being proposed, the specific planting plan, which would show the types and varieties and their locations, would go to staff to review. And what we would do is we would compare it to the recommended plant list that we have and confirm that everything is, is suitable for the site. That's typically how it's done.
Okay, but if I could add to the motion, whenever that's made, that all the native, all of the plants would be native to the area.
I'm not sure that condition's enforceable because staff does not know what, what those plans consist of. And we would have to have a list of native, of agreed-upon native plants that we could make available to the public in order to enforce that condition.
I've been asking for that to work with the tree board for quite some time.
Which is why we have that as the next agenda item.
Great.
Can I have you bring back up the view of the three lots, or the three structures on the lot?
Here's the site plan, would you like the elevation drawing?
Okay, so on the, I'll say the east or the right-hand side, the square with the four, yeah, down in that area. So are those picnic tables, what are those?
That's what they appear to be, and that's how I would interpret them, but we would ask the applicant to interpret that as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious on what those are, because you have one on, two on the one side and then one on the other side. Just curious on what those structures actually are.
Looks like outdoor furniture to me. That'd be mine.
Kind of what my assumption was, but I didn't want to assume without knowing for sure.
I'm sure your landscape plans occasionally will have those thrown in there, right?
Oh, yeah.
So is that kind of?
I'm sure that's what it is.
Okay. Make sure we weren't in left field there. Well, they're attractive.
Yeah, I mean.
To me, it beats the tenement houses.
Yeah.
I mean, because you see, and I'm sure there's still a few of them there, but I mean, if I were to choose to be a neighbor with that or a tenement house, it would be those three structures, hands down.
So I guess I would just have a couple of questions for the applicant, once we're to that point.
Do we have any questions, more questions for staff, or are we ready for the applicant?
I don't.
I don't.
I think we're ready for you.
Okay, hi, I'm Ron DeBeethy, 2218 Pheasant Lane, I'm the CFO at Kansas Wesleyan.
So a couple of quick questions, so I'm assuming is that land, I mean, is it on that photo that was up, is that picnic table areas?
I think those were just drawn in, those weren't, weren't planned items that we had necessarily there, so.
Gotcha, so then with that plan being there, so you're going to have five students in each of those facilities is the plan?
Right.
So trash dumpster areas, where are they taking in or depositing their trash on this property then?
John, can you, John Swagerty is our, our Director of Plant Operations, is on the line. John, could you address that, please?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we have the other houses that are along that block there that would be straight west of the area that we're planning to build. All those houses currently share 90-gallon dumpsters. So we would add more dumpsters into that alleyway where the Salina Iron and Metal or Hometown Waste Disposal can come through and pick them up on a Tuesday. That's where we currently have all of our students that live in our housing right there, putting their trash out at this time.
John can also speak to the planting information?
And that would be less my, less of my concern at this point. My other question would be, are you keeping the doors purple as in the?
Yes.
Good, I like that.
This is going to be called Coyote Row. And it, and as staff said, this is the beginning of plans for extensive student housing. We are full, and we continue to have growth in our student count. So this is really valuable to us immediately. We, Bridget Weiser, who's our VP of Student Development, is, is here with me today too. She's already been vetting students, this would be specifically for upper-class students. They would have to have already expressed interest in being in a house or off-campus. One of the biggest things in talking with our students in this last spring is that they want private rooms. Not semi-private, but private rooms. They don't mind sharing a bathroom with a few people, but not everybody on the hall. So these really address what students today are looking for. We are actually going to probably have a rush on, and making decisions to only have 15 students in here is going to be quite a chore.
And that is going to be the color that you're looking for?
Yes, yes, what you're looking at is going to be the color.
I think it's a very good-looking product.
Yeah, it is. That is, is that cedar siding?
No, John, can you, I'm going to let John talk about that.
I'm sorry, I'm now just being curious.
It's a preformed, it's wood, but it has a coating on it.
It's a type of composite siding that has, I believe the siding has a 50-year warranty on it. So they're going to be metal roofed and then a composite siding, so we've got 30 on the roof, 50 on the siding. They're extremely energy efficient, utilizing about as much energy in a year as a normal house does in a month to two months.
Very interesting.
They are all-electric, so they're real efficient.
Do you by chance know the current population of your student body?
On campus, this last spring we had 425. In the fall, we had 493. Spring always, we have a little attrition from fall to spring.
Sure.
But we are expecting at least that many again this fall.
Good to know, any other questions for the applicant?
I don't.
I've got one other question I would like to ask, though. We, we did receive a letter with opposition about this, but where is this, where are they located at? Do we have a?
It would be south of this property on Highland.
So here's the subject property at the corner, so there are a few houses to the south.
And we do own all the properties between those.
So all of the properties to that property?
North, north of that property to the street are, are Kansas Wesleyan.
Then do you own any of the properties south of that property?
Not the one right next to it. Bridget, can you?
It's the lot right there where the two white cars and the two dark cars, we own that house right there where the mouse is. And then the one that runs north and south as well, right there to the left. Those are Kansas Wesleyan properties, so there's three houses in between the areas that we own in the corner.
And where was the objection in that letter?
The primary objection dealt with, with parking and off-street parking. And the challenge that campuses always have is having parking in a location that students will use it because you can have parking, but if it's not where they want to park, they'll just park somewhere else. And every campus I've ever been to, you always have on-street parking that's pretty much always full. So I, I, I think it's one of those things that I don't know if, if Kansas Wesleyan could have enough off-street parking or people still would not use on-street parking, it's just, this is what students tend to do.
So essentially, it's a fact of life of living next to a university.
That's my experience.
I mean.
And what percentage of students has cars?
Yeah, most of them, the vast majority own, have cars.
Right.
So we're actually saying if this, if this little concept that you guys built takes off, then the properties that are south of that will probably be looking at the same type of housing and moving on down.
And to, and farther to the west, going all the way over towards Ninth Street. Because those, we have, we actually have students in all of those houses currently.
How long ago did you acquire those properties along that street? Just because I, I think it makes sense that, I remember that kind of being a, a little bit rundown and dilapidated and it would make sense that you guys have acquired it and honestly improved the neighborhood?
Yes, the house that was sitting on the corner that we had demolished had rodents. It had, it had been empty for over almost three years. And it had rodents, it had squatters, it had, it was really undesirable. The windows were broken out. We also demolished the house just on the north side of the, of that intersection too, on the northwest corner. We've taken that house down, and that's the large lot that you see there. And that's where we're going to have parking, we're adding more parking. Yeah, the 1604 and 1608 Highland, we have purchased both of those within the last year. We already had 1602, then we have 1604 and 1608. 1608 is a four-unit, no, 1608 has, it's a five-bedroom house. 1604 is a four-unit multifamily dwelling. 1602 is a single-family dwelling.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time and.
Okay.
Sorry for all the questions.
That's okay.
I think it's, I mean, I personally, I think it's a good-looking product and kind of in what I said on the appeals meeting before was, if I was a college student again, I would have much rather lived in something like this than a dorm because I'm the same thing, I wouldn't, I would want my own room, I don't mind sharing a bathroom, but I don't want to have to share a bedroom with someone. I don't mind sharing a bathroom, but I don't wanna have to share a bedroom with somebody all the time. So I think it looks good, and I think if you develop that whole area, you know that the university is going to maintain the properties. They're gonna
Exactly.
Maintain the landscaping on it. So it's going to be a nice-looking product for a long period of time. So.
We're ready for.
Yeah, if we're ready for a motion.
Well, we've gotta do a public comment. Anybody from the public like to comment on this?
Jump in ahead.
Sorry, I don't wanna forget that.
Does not appear we have anyone on Zoom.
Okay.
Wanting to comment.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yep. I'd make a motion to approve application CU twenty-one dash four with the staff recommendations on page eight and nine.
Second.
Okay. It has been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rhonda.
So we have no legislative matters to come before the Planning Commission this evening and no administrative items, but we did bring back a preliminary discussion item before we would adjourn. And we've had several members of the Planning Commission express interest in reviewing our current recommended zero-scape planting list. And the concerns expressed related to some of the plant varieties on the list being dated and difficult to find, and that our list is not reflective of a number of new varieties or hybrids that are, are more readily available and desired by both landscape professionals and local business and property owners. The other concern expressed was that our existing recommended zero-scape plant list does not have a sufficient number of native plants and does not differentiate between planters, plants that are native and non-native. And so what we've discussed is that what you don't want to have happen is that you have projects and you have required landscaping to be put in upfront in order for the, the development to get their certificates of occupancy and then have the landscaping fail because it was, the plant selections were inappropriate or they weren't heat tolerant or drought tolerant. And so in two thousand and six, when we had a, a major drought in the city, we carefully looked at our list and got the assistance of the City Forester, the Slayne County Extension Office, and the, the Dick Arboretum of the Plains in Heston, Kansas. And they met with the Planning Commission and Tree Advisory Board on several occasions and helped develop this list. It's our belief that many of the plants that are on the recommended plant list are, in fact, would be considered native Kansas plants and are suitable for Kansas. They're just not identified as such. So one of our goals would be to add a column to our list to assist the public and landscape professionals to know what is native and what is, is non-native. And so we carried this over to this meeting because Mr. Baffa was not present at the last meeting to review it and provide input, and also to let Mr. Bernhardt look at that and maybe make some suggestions to staff of who we could get input from. And then we, we added a, just an attachment from a program that the City of Hayes has. And rather than referring to it as zero-escaping, they refer to it as native plantings. But all of the plantings that we saw mentioned by the City of Hayes as native, we have on our list as zero-escaping. So we don't really think they're that, that far off, but the City of Hayes has a program similar to ours where they're trying to encourage drought-tolerant plants that don't need excessive watering. And so they, they also mentioned that one of the parks in Hayes has a pollinator, pollinator garden established in two thousand and eighteen by volunteer members of the Hayes Beautification Committee. And the garden was planted with a variety of native wildflower seed to provide nectar and pollen to a wide range of pollinators. And so there's, that type of thing is not really under the control of this commission. It would be more related to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and to the Tree Advisory Board as far as what occurs in, in city parks. What we are primarily focused on in this commission is the type of landscaping that's done on private development. And so I guess we would wanna hear any additional questions commissioners might have and hear from Mr. Bernhardt if he had any thoughts of who we should send our current list out to, to get feedback on, on things that should be added or things that should be struck from that list.
Dan, did you wanna give any input on that before?
Yes. Yes, thank you. The purpose of planting native plants is because birds and all other animals, including insects, have evolved together to feed off of one another. When you add a, like a Japanese sakova, is a wonderful tree. It's very drought resistant, but it doesn't have any natural predators or animals that rely upon it for their reproduction. And forty percent of the insect species in the United States have been reduced by forty percent. And I just went on about a thousand mile trip, and I had very few bugs on my windshield. And many of you can remember, you know, you'd almost have to get out and wash your windows because there were so many bugs on it. Well, the proliferation of non-native plants are contributing to the demise of insects which birds rely upon. And, you know, we've had a thirty percent reduction in the bird species, too. And so with climate change, you know, so prevalent, you know, we need to make a stand and plant only natives. And I, I really think we should have a, a Department of Climate Change that can help Slina address the concerns. And I, you know, I could go on, but I don't wanna take up any more time.
But how, how can you, or how can planning commissioners help us? When I have, I've reviewed half a dozen lists from Kansas State University, Kearney State, Nebraska, from the state of Nebraska. And when I cross-reference our zero-scape plant list with the list of native plants, about eighty percent of the plants that we have on our zero-scape plant list are native.
Okay, so let's eliminate the twenty percent.
But we can't eliminate them. What we're planning to do is to educate so that people know which of the plants that are on our zero-scape plant list are native.
Okay, so we could just do that with an asterisk?
Or add a column to our list to indicate that they're native. And then if there are, that is, I guess our first question is, did you receive today's packet?
No.
Okay. So that, that will be our, our first challenge is, is because the last two meetings, we've sent out our zero-escaping plant list to allow comments to be made on that list. I've also sent out the list from the Dick Arboretum of what they consider to be native plants. And there, that's the Dick Arboretum native plant list. And about seventy-five to eighty percent of the plants on the Dick Arboretum native plant list are on our zero-escaping plant list because the Dick Arboretum helped us develop that list.
Unfortunately, I did not receive any of those.
Okay. So what, what do you think is, what do you think is the best method by which staff and your fellow planning commissioners can be educated as to what plants on our zero-escaping plant list are not native and which ones are native?
I think that there's many opportunities, including the Dick Arboretum, but, you know, they also grow varieties that are not conducive to insects that they propose to be native. And they're a hybrid and not really native. So I think I could look at the list and go through my books and find out which are native and which aren't. A classic example of that is the English oak, which is the pyramidal plant that is on, first so predominant on Santa Fe, which is not native. It's a English plant. And I don't know if there was a variety that is native that would fit that form of plant, but I think we can meet with the Tree Board, the City Forester, Dick Arboretum, and come up the reasonable plan.
So would it be in our better interest to just postpone this discussion?
Well, I think what we're gonna try to do at some point this summer is to have a, a joint steady session where we would invite the Tree Advisory Board to attend your meeting, have representatives from the Dick Arboretum attend the meeting, and the City Forester, and then whoever Mr. Bernhardt recommends that we invite to that meeting so that we get feedback from people who are in the, in the nursery business. So do you have thoughts, Derek, on who we might send our current list to just to get some feedback from them?
Yes, I do. Obviously, I think Jason Graves.
With Slayne County Extension?
With the Extension Office, City Forester, Tree Board. Couple of people I really thought of that I've been to some classes with also, and I'd have to, I can't find his information. I need, Jason would probably have it, though. Tim McDonald, he is out of the Sedgwick County. He is a really big tree guru and is probably the most knowledgeable guy I've ever met on trees. And another one that might be interested would be Kathy Lavis. She's a professor at K-State that could, I don't know if she'd even, if she'd be able to come or if she'd actually give us some literature, something to help us along, or a little journey here.
Or maybe, maybe through Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that would work. And then I think as far as, I'm kinda breaking this up into two separate issues, really, the native versus non-native, and then what is, what we need to be focusing on for survivability, I guess. I think the business owners come into play there, because I said this last week, but we, we don't get the warranty on the plants. We warranty everything ourselves. So we're, we know what grows, we know what to plant, we know what's gonna stay, because if not, we're paying for it. So I think as far as your interests is, commercial properties of the plants making it year after year, I think the local business owners would probably be our best bet when it comes to mainly shrubs and a little bit into the trees on that also. Like I said, I think, I think they're two, two separate issues is finding out what's native and what's not native versus what we feel is comfortable putting on this list for.
For durability, survivability, and availability.
Exactly.
We don't wanna have plants that aren't widely available.
Yeah, there's native stuff that doesn't like a transplant, so it might not make it. It might have a low transplant rate. And then there's, you know, stuff that's not native that, you know, we throw on the ground and never touch it and it lives forever. So I, like I said, I think they're kinda two separate issues. But if we did a column to note that, that would, that would be fine. I think that would cover Mr. Baffa's concerns on that.
Yeah, and then we wanna, then if we wanna express a preference for native plantings as opposed to non-native, then we can point to specific plants that are, that would meet that criteria. Staff doesn't feel like we're in a position to do that right, right now, because there seems to be not a full meeting of the minds of what, what constitutes native. And so it, we will look ahead and then we'll, we'll try to physically invite and then provide the opportunity for Zoom. But I, I think we would try to set up a steady session, probably be in this room and, and have as many good minds that we can have, bring them to the table, subject matter experts, so that we can come up with the most efficient list possible.
I can email you those, contact info, too, on those guys that I mentioned earlier.
And I hope that can be done before August, when my term ends.
Okay. So we'll, we'll make sure that this gets resent to you, Dan, and we'll, we'll get information emailed from Derek and we'll start, we'll start putting, we'll put a, a cover letter together to those groups and tell us what we're working on and that our goal is to try to have a, a steady session. So we'll, we'll work in that direction.
I really appreciate you taking some advice from me.
So as far as additional matters or other matters, we had a filing deadline Friday. We had, have had a number of meetings with people discussing potential projects at our Development Review Team spread out over the past couple of months. For better or worse, everyone that we met with all decided to submit their applications on Friday. So we spent today sorting through those for your July sixth meeting, and I think we're right at about eleven applications that we received. So we will have, I don't think July sixth is gonna be a good day to have a steady session or get, get into, too deep into the landscaping, zero-escaping subject, because we're gonna have enough, enough things for you. But we have a couple of applications that are related to Kansas Wesleyan. We have a project, a proposed project that's out on South Ninth Street that is south of the, the motel that's out there on the west side and is, would involve annexation. And then we have a proposal for a hotel or motel in front of the Central Mall, south of the J.C. Penney Store. And we have some plans for additional multifamily housing. So realizing that that falls on the backside of a Fourth of July holiday, if you are gonna have travel plans. if you are going to have travel plans or vacation plans or whatever, the sooner you could let us know about that so we can make sure we can get a quorum. And then we're also going to see... I think I know of one person who submitted an expression of interest that's an outside-the-city resident, but they have not been appointed to the Planning Commission yet. So we're going to try to get the City Commission to look at appointing some people. But July 6th, we anticipate having a fairly lengthy meeting for you with lots of variety.
You won't be there?
Giving you notification, I won't be here for July 6th.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
When do we expect to get back to the two meetings-per-month schedule?
Well, right now, it's not only... It's kind of a question of staffing as well. So even if we... It's... We're gradually building back up our staff, but we've been short... We're still short one planner. We can't seem to find a candidate to fill that spot. So partially, it's just a matter of our workforce. But I would expect by fall, we might get back to two meetings. But I think through the summer, we're going to try to stick to the one meeting. Except, you know, we could use July 20th for our study session, something like that. But because we were meeting once a month and everybody saw July 6th, everybody aimed for July 6th. That's where we're at. So we'll... Like I said, we appreciate hearing from Mr. Olson right away. And we'll... If anybody knows of travel plans or out-of-town situation, the sooner Margie can know about that, the better. Just because we don't have our full nine. So at seven, we just have to make sure we at least have our five. I think that's all that we have for you this evening, except I got a whole collection of minutes for Mr. Lenkowitz to sign.
Not a problem. I guess we should check and make sure there's nobody on Zoom to comment on public forum.
We do not have anyone on Zoom for the public forum.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Let's second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.